Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting Monday, March 13. Ms. Jameson, everyone is present tonight. And to start, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will open the public hearing for comments on the fiscal year 24 budget. No one has signed up as of now. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on the fiscal 24 budget? Ms. Sheets? I'll read this one little sentence, but those commenting tonight, please limit your remarks to up to three minutes and a reminder to please keep comments specifically relevant to the topic of the fiscal year 24 budget. Other topics may be addressed during the delegations portion of the regular meeting. When you come to the podium, please state your name and district. Thank you. Ms. Sheets?
Good evening. Tony Sheets, I'm in the Jeffersontown District. I want to thank you to everyone who worked so diligently putting together the recommended fiscal 24 school budget. This budget is especially remarkable considering the Virginia Department of Education's egregious grocery tax era during a time when our nation is already facing economic hard times. Kudos to all of you for ensuring teachers and staff receive well-deserved salary and step increases which will bring our compensation scale up to market. I admire the administration for finding ways to keep positions that were once funded through the Esra funds. I applaud our county government and our school system for working together to creatively find a way to fund instructional and technology expenses with the funding from the School Capital Fund and the School Textbook Fund. I am relieved that our school system will be purchasing five diesel school buses with my tax dollars instead of electric school buses. I did not see any appropriation in the fiscal year 24 budget for a comprehensive anti-trafficking educational program for all staff and students as recommended in the Commonwealth's report on human trafficking released in January. Since there is no appropriation in this budget for an anti-trafficking curriculum separate from the family life education, I am hopeful that this board is taking steps to partner with ATI and apply for the grant program sponsored by the Department of Health and Human Services. As a former educator, there are a lot of things I know about human trafficking now that I did not know when I was still in the classroom. This grant program sponsored by the Department of Health and Human Services is an excellent opportunity for Culpeper schools to educate and equip all members of our school community with essential skills and knowledge about the pervasive evils of human trafficking. Thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Are there any other persons that would like to comment on the fiscal year 24 budget? With no other comments, then we now close the public hearing on the fiscal year 24 budget. Thank you. Right now, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And we will move on to our presentations for tonight. And so, people in the audience know, they are called our ZAP awards. And the ZAP stands for zealous appreciation for positive performance. And our first ZAP awards would, we are going to honor the 2023 VHSL Wrestling State Placement. And would our Eastern View High School sponsor, Chris Taylor, and Culpeper County High School sponsor, Alice Santos, please come to the podium. Mrs. Smith, let hand you the awards. And if you would tell us a little bit about your players and what they did. Mr. Taylor, would you like to speak and tell us a little bit about the students?
It's good to have the pleasure of being here again. It seems like it's been about seven years now, I think, that I get to come in and be involved with some youth from, or some of these young folks, students from Eastern View. The first one I'd like to recognize is Brett Cladaball. Brett Cladaball is actually state champion this year for the second time. Not only is Brett a tremendous athlete, but he's a four-star linebacker for football and a state champion for wrestling, and is currently holding a 3.8. So if we can give some credit to that. All of these young men that we'll be recognizing for wrestling tonight are not just great athletes, but they're men of great character. I'm sure Dr. Bott back there can attest to that. Great character, great athletes, great young men, all the way around. This next athlete is near and dear to my heart, another 3.8 GPA, in Brayden Walker. I'm sorry, 3.6. Brayden is committed to Elon. And again, I can't stress it enough, when you can, when you get athletes that are not only great athletes, but young men that will show great character and do what they say they're going to do, it's truly a pleasure to coach them. The next athlete, is on the smaller end, but still strong, Mighty Mouse I like to call him, Elijah Smoot. Elijah Smoot. Elijah Smoot, third in the state. And I say Brayden, Brayden was also a state champion, so state champion, state champion, and Elijah Smoot, third in state, works very hard. All of these young men, not only they work hard in school, but they work very hard at wrestling, not just during the season, but throughout the offseason as well at their craft. The next young man I'd like to recognize is another Smoot, the one and only Kayden Smoot. Kayden is a 3.6 GPA, very intelligent young man, just like all these other young men up here. And if I could, I'd just say once again that character is one of the most important things to me in the wrestling room. And I'm glad that all of these young men not only brought us to a point to where we could be second in the state this year, but they brought the name of the EV program. They held that name up as they should character-wise. And I'm very appreciative of these young men, young men not only for their academic accomplishments, but their athletic accomplishments as well. Another round of applause for these young men.
Mr. Santos? Here's the, here's the mic.
So for Culpeper County High School, we have two, A.J. Marshall and Sebastian Gebereit. So we'll start with Sebastian here. Sebastian took fourth at the state tournament this year. Sebastian is a phenomenal athlete, phenomenal scholar, and is going to attend Emory &amp; Henry next year to wrestle and continue his academics there. The final award is A.J. Marshall, who was a four-time state placer for CC and has also set the school record for the most amount of wins with 137, 137 wins in his career. Through the pandemic and everything as well, which is a tremendous amount. Yep, just one more thing. So just real quick to these two, like Chris was saying about character, these two are the leaders of our room, character-wise, academics, athletics, everything. They have been phenomenal representatives of our school for, not only on the state level, but also on the national team level. Both of them have been several times with the national team for Virginia, representing us at state tournaments, national tournaments, things like that. And both of them are both going to be, more than likely for A.J., at Emory &amp; Henry next year to wrestle and continue their academics.
We will now have student recognition for the 2023 Virginia High School League Indoor Track State Placement for CCHS sponsors Mark Dennis and Aaron Keesh, and for Eastern View High School sponsor Larry Kilby. Please come forward.
Good evening. We had a pretty good season, once again, which I love to be able to say. Had some great athletes this year. These were definitely three of my best athletes that we had. First person I want to say, had her as a freshman. She was an amazing jumper. Ended up tearing one ACL. Luckily, it wasn't her jumping leg. But then she tore the other one too. So she could never jump again, which I did the same thing, so I know exactly what she was going through. So she became a sprinter. She's the fastest girl I've ever coached personally, second fastest time in school history. And even though that was her second-best event, it's not even why she's getting an award. She had a bad start at states. But then she went through shot for the first year ever, ended up being fourth in the state in shot. So that just shows how athletic of a person Kylie is. She's going to Hampton to play softball. Again, very athletic, good at every sport, great person, hard worker, Kylie Quinn. The next person lives life the way I think everybody wants to live life. They don't really let anything bother them, has fun at all times. I like to have positive reinforcements all the time, telling people, you know, you're better than you think you are, all that stuff. And for about a year and a half now, he didn't believe anything I said. Then he comes out to the state meet, well, actually, a couple of months ago, he jumped 6'2", and he was like, hey, I think I might be pretty good if I actually, if I actually work. And I said, yeah, I've been saying that for a year now, but glad that you think that way. So he had a knee injury. He went and did the play, which he was one of the lead actors in the play. Did great. He's a great actor, great singer. Comes back and he probably practiced about three days before states. And he won state championship in high jump. So after that, he said, hey, can you make me a list of schools I should apply to? Because I think I, I think I want to run track in college. So one of those kids with those stories keep me going. But it says Lawrence LaSasso, but if you know him, everybody calls him Gator. So Gator come up here. I told you, he's, he's different. He's a different guy. Okay. Last but definitely not least, the person that won every meet she went to this whole year, now three-time state champion. She is the best shot putter in any class in the state of Virginia. She threw over 43 feet. She went to Nike Nationals this weekend, top six All-American. She got seventh, unfortunately, but she's got another chance this weekend. She's going to Adidas Nationals where more than likely, because you know, I'll be there this time to support, she'll be, she'll end up being an All-American. She'll end up being the first All-American I've ever had the chance to coach. As far as colleges, she can, she's going to be able to pick wherever she wants to go. So if you don't know the name yet, you should try to get, jump on the bandwagon now before it's too late, but Teresa Breckley.
Congratulations to you guys. So I'm Coach Kilby from Eastern View High School. The young lady that I wanted to talk to you about today is Ms. Evelyn Anderson. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to work with this young lady since she was a baby. And every year, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, now her 12th grade year, she has never disappointed. She's always showing up, ready to give her best efforts. She's always showing up to leave an example behind that kids look up to. Every day, every day is something different when it comes to Ms. Evelyn Anderson. You never know what you're going to get, but one thing that you definitely will get is hard work. She has been a state competitor from ninth grade all the way into her 12th grade year and continues to get better. She's had a, a, a number of D1 offers. She will be heading to VMI to further her career in track and field, state contender this year, just getting back from Nationals as well. Kid pretty much does whatever she needs to do to get it done. I always take pride in creating an environment where my athletes are appreciated and never tolerated, because I feel like this is when they can find the best version of themselves. And I ask this one all the time, am I, am I, am I doing right by you? Am I doing right by your teammates? And some days she gives me, yeah, coach, you're doing good. And some days she's able to be like, hey, tighten this up or tighten that up. And I feel like in life, that's going to take her so far. She's more to me than just a track athlete. That's why I'm not writing anything down. I just want to talk from my heart. It's not every day you get to meet a young lady like this. And I just want to tell her thank you for supporting me, and I hope she felt the same support from the time we started to the time you're walking out. I'm still going to be there for her, and she's going to continue to make all of us proud. So Ms. Evelyn Anderson, VMI, all these good things.
Thank you very much. Our next award is for the All-State Band. Eastern View High School sponsor, Adam Roach, and Culpeper County sponsor, Nathan Charles.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize these students. So in order to be afforded the opportunity to audition for All-State Band, one has to first earn a high placement in either All-District Band or Senior Regional Orchestra. Several of these students actually did both of those things. So to be afforded the opportunity just to audition is quite an honor. These students auditioned for All-State Band on February 25th, February 25th at JMU and were, of course, successful in their, in their auditions. These students will be performing at the Greater Richmond Convention Center on, on April 29th. They will go the 27th, 28th, and 29th to rehearse with the other All-State students and perform a concert on the 29th of April. So very excited for these students. And first up, we have Valerie Alvarado Alas. So Valerie earned Seventh Chair Concert Band for, for All-State Band, and she has also been accepted recently into JMU, into their music program, so we're very proud of her for that. Next is Jack Sislinger. Jack earned Ninth Chair Concert Band Clarinet. Jack is also our composer in residence over at Eastern View, composed any number of pieces, had some of those pieces, one of those pieces featured at the Virginia Music Educators Conference in Richmond in the fall. So he keeps it coming. This is Jack. And finally, Mr. Ian Larkin. Ian here has the distinction of, well, it's easy enough just to say, he's a top trumpet player in the state. There is no question or hesitation about that at this point. He earned First Chair Trumpet Orchestra for All-State Band, also First Chair All-State Jazz, First Chair in the District, First Chair in the Region. Last year. That's okay. It's all good. So he, he is between last year and this year, without a doubt, top trumpet player in the state. So Ian Larkin.
Good evening. I get to speak on behalf of Matthew Chacon. Matthew is fourth in the state on Tuba, and he'll be performing Third Chair Symphony Band at the All-State Event in April, as well as, let's see, First Chair at the Senior Regional Orchestra Event on Tuba. Beyond that, multi-instrumentalist, as he likes to call himself as well. Any instrument you give him, he'll figure it out in a day, and it's really incredible to see the process. And I think that's one of the under-appreciated insights or perspectives. You know, from the outside in, musicianship is always this thing that we glamorize and put on stage, and it's really cool to see the process that our students go through, especially in Matthew with any and everything, music. You know, it's, it's not effortless, but you know, it's astounding to see the effort that, that you put in and that all of our students, we see day in and day out. It's incredible to see just how much you grow through music. So whether it's on Tuba, trombone, composition and arrangement, anything and everything. Happy to give this award to Matthew Chacon.
We will now have student recognition for the 2023 All-State Choir sponsor, Mrs. Richarsky.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tiffany Richarsky, and I am the choir director at Eastern View High School. And I am so excited to announce our All-State students for choir. And first of all, I just want to give a shout out, I'm a proud teacher tonight because Mark Dennis was in my choir 18 years ago. And it is so awesome to see one of your students get up here and announce other students and be the leaders they are in the school system. So tonight, I'm going to talk about All-State Choir. For All-State Choir, you have to go through a bunch of hoops to get there. So you start with trying out for All-District Choir, and if you make All-District Choir, you get to try out again, and you have to prepare an art piece, and you have to prepare sight reading, and on each level, the sight reading gets tougher and tougher. And so then at All-District Choir, we audition, and those students, only four per section make All-State out of the entire district. So I am very happy to say that Eastern View showed up, and we have a lot of students that were, are going to All-State Choir, or they're going to be an alternate. And I can't be a more proud teacher. So I'd like these students to come forth. The first one is not here tonight. She is actually at a concert, enjoying some music, but her name is Maren March. So I'm very proud of her, Maren March. Our second student is Ava Conway. You come forward. Ava is a very hard worker for choir and for drama, and she's also in our Germana program, doing very well. She exhibits great character, and we are just very proud of her. Congrats, Ava. Congrats, Ava. Our next student is Zachary Harms. Zachary is a freshman who made All-State Choir, which is very hard to do. We are just excited that he has come and just worked hard, especially on sight reading. Many, many hours went into practicing at home and making sure he had all his ducks in a row for the audition. And I can't be more proud of you. And I'm sure Ms. Fleming is also very proud of you for your accomplishment. Congratulations. Our next student is Mr. Wyatt Clatterball. Wyatt is, well, I should have said Ava is an alto, Zachary is a tenor, and Wyatt is a tenor. And they'll all be delegates going to All-State Choir. And Wyatt is actually our top-scoring tenor. He also serves as our Vice President of our Choir, and he is dynamic. He's on EVTV every day, and he does a great impression of Dr. Bob. Thank you. Congratulations, Wyatt. Our next student is Ms. Talia Craig. Talia is a senior. She is going to be our alternate for soprano II. And she is also going to be our Cinderella at the end of March. She works really hard. She's dynamic. She's got a gorgeous voice. If you've never heard her sing, please come out and hear her sing. And we are just so proud of you. And Mr. Ballard's proud of you, too. We are so excited of our kids. So, congratulations, Talia. Our next student, Mr. Ian Edwards. Ian is another freshman who made tenor alternate. He is going to be our Lionel in Cinderella, which is basically the prince's right hand, right? And he has just been awesome. He doesn't sit still very often. He's always all over the place. But he loves to sing. He loves to dance. And he works very hard. And I'm just very proud of all the accomplishments that you have made this year. Congratulations, Ian. And finally, Mr. Caleb Rollinger. Congratulations. Caleb is a sophomore, and he is also an alternate for tenor. We had a great tenor section this year. He is an extremely hard worker in class and always tries to get the notes right and always keeps pressing forward, and especially has worked hard on his sight reading and his dynamics. And he's just an overall awesome kid. And we are just so blessed to have him in the choir program. So, I present to you the All-State Choir Delegates and Alternates from Eastern View High School.
Thank you, everyone. And before Mrs. Richarsky sits down, she's going to tell us a little bit more about March being the Fine Arts in Our School Month. Tiffany, it's all yours.
Dr. Bradz, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Tiffany Richarsky, and I'm currently the Fine Arts Coordinator for CCPS, as well as the Choral Director for Eastern View High School and the Fine Arts Instructional Team Leader at Eastern View High School. I would like to thank all of you for allowing me time to highlight the amazing and valuable CCPS Fine Arts Department during March, which is Youth Arts Month, Theater in Our Schools Month, and Music in Our Schools Month. Time and time again, research shows the importance of arts in a student's well-rounded education. Students who are involved in the fine arts are more likely to have higher creative problem-solving thinking skills, the ability to work as a team, and be more confident, among many other benefits. Culpeper County currently offers full-time art and music and after-school beginning band at the elementary level, art, band, chorus, guitar, and theater at the middle school level, and art, band, chorus, piano, guitar, and theater at the high school level. Many of these programs also offer more after-school opportunities with auditions, honors choirs, bands, musicals, winter guard, and more. But you don't want to hear from me. The best people to tell you about our awesome program are the students themselves. We are excited to show you a video that the entire CCPS Fine Arts Team put together last November. But before we start the video, I have a few of my students, if my students would please help. Ava, will you come help, too? We are going to give you CCPS Fine Arts swag bags. We thought we'd give you these bags just in case you need the first item in the bag while watching the video, the tissues. Every time I watch the video, I need them. So, we are proud to give you these bags. Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Ava. Okay, make sure you get your tissues ready because I needed them. And they have bunnies on them, too. I'll tell you a story about a bunny later. Members of the Board, we are proud to present the world premiere, are we ready, Pearl? Of Why We Create. We hope you enjoy.
As theater students of Culpeper County Public Schools, we're here to introduce this presentation about why our fine arts program creates.
We create to express ourselves.
We create to find ourselves.
We create to share beauty with others.
We create to connect with others.
We create to comment on society.
We create to unite society.
Whether it's on a stage, in a concert hall, or in a gallery, we create because each of us has something inside that we long to share.
That needs to be shared.
We create to serve.
We create to live.
The following performance by CCPS choirs and bands is entitled Why We Sing, but reflects the sentiments we all hold in our hearts.
Why We Create.
Thank you again for letting us show you this video. I would like to thank the following people, and would you please stand, our art teachers, our theater teachers, and our music teachers, if you guys would stand. These teachers work tirelessly every day to give our students the opportunities to create and thrive. And I would also like to thank John Krawchuk from Culpeper Media and Mr. Hallman for supporting this project and helping us put this together. And finally, I would like to thank our administrators, Dr. Bradz, and the school board for continuing to support and value the fine arts program in Culpeper County. This is Why We Create. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. That was beautiful. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
Just thank you so much. And that was really good.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Students, parents, you made our meeting fun tonight.
Yes.
We appreciate your being here very much, and staff for joining us. It was good to see your faces.
And congratulations to all of those wonderful students, everything they've done, all of them, from kindergarten right through to our seniors this year. Congratulations, you are great kids. Thank you. Now, if any of our students need to leave, we understand. And the same with our staff, if they would need to go, too. It's been a long day.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Is Dr. Gilbert here? I didn't see. There she is. All right.
Elizabeth, are you trying to run off? It's Emerald Hill. I'm just teasing.
All right, we will get on with our meeting now. And Yes. And our next is our Principal's Report. Emerald Hill Elementary School Report, Dr. Gilbert.
My guests and I are very thankful you let them leave before our presentation. But Madam Chair, the Board, Dr. Bradz, thank you for inviting Emerald Hill to come out and present to you tonight. I have two guests I would like to introduce. To my right, I don't know if she's been formally introduced to the Board, but this is Mrs. Macy Lane. She's our new Assistant Principal at Emerald Hill. And I just want to introduce her to you, and we have loved having her join our family. And to my left is a face and a name you might recognize, but this is Ms. Yvette Thomas. She is Emerald Hill's Teacher of the Year this year. She is a leader in our building, and hopefully, very soon, you will see her as a leader in the county. But she is getting her administration degree. And in the fall, she had approached me about doing a project for her class. And we had to think of a problem and think of a solution together. And she created a wonderful recruitment video for us that we have started sending out to people that we interview. And we would like to show you our recruitment video.
Welcome to Emerald Hill. Come on in.
Here at Emerald Hill Elementary, our mission of the staff, students, and community is to create a safe and secure learning environment, which will meet the individual needs of students so they may achieve the skills necessary for success as lifelong learners. We believe that our mission can be achieved by working as a student-staff-community-team to promote respect, responsibility, and honesty by example and instruction.
What I love about Emerald Hill is how all the staff are so friendly and welcoming.
I love Emerald Hill because the staff is supportive, kind, and there to do the best job they can for their students.
I love Emerald Hill because of our community of learners and staff.
I love coming to Emerald Hill every day because I love seeing the teacher-student interaction.
What do I love about Emerald Hill? I love coming to school. I love the people at school. I love the students. And this is my first school that I got to teach at, but it's fantastic.
What I love about our school is the wonderful community we have here. We have excellent teachers. We have wonderful kids and excellent parents supporting us.
The faculty, the people, the kids, the atmosphere and everything.
What about Emerald Hill? I love the staff here, the students who come in. It's a very positive environment. And there is one mission, and that is to help students become lifelong learners.
I believe I make a positive impact in Emerald Hill because I have high expectations. I believe that all children are capable of learning.
I show up every day because I love kids. I've done it for 46 years, and I guess I'll continue. And Emerald Hill has been my home for 25. Go Emerald Go Emerald Hill Eagles!
It motivates me to come here and give my best effort every day, and seeing the smile on those kids' faces when they make those progress, when they meet their goals.
I love that all the staff is like supportive of each other, and that, you know, if somebody needs help in something, that they're always willing to lend a helping hand.
I love Emerald Hill because every day I feel like I'm coming to work and I'm with my family. We're there for each other, we pep each other up, and we work hard for our students.
What I love about Emerald Hill is being a new teacher. I'm fully supported by not only my team, but also all of my staff.
What I love the most about Emerald Hill is how we all embrace each other's differences and cultural backgrounds. We don't see each other as outsiders or strangers. We see each other as family. At Emerald Hill, we are a community.
Thank you for visiting. Hope you join our family.
So Ms. Thomas made that video for us, and I really love it, especially at the end of interviews when we ask people, "What questions do you have for us?", and they always say, "Well, tell me about your school, tell me about the culture." And so now, I can show this video and really show them not just what I believe our culture is, but what the team and the staff feel our culture is. So I'm very thankful for Ms. Thomas, and I wanted to show you guys the video. As you saw in our video, this year was Emerald Hill's 25th anniversary, and we have a shirt for each of you, so after the meeting, I'll get your sizes to make sure we give you the right one. Do you guys have any questions?
Are there any questions? Ms. Slocanville?
I don't know who figured out wholeheartedly had E-H-E in it, but that's pretty impressive.
We had to Google words with E-H-E.
Ah, tech. Any other comments?
Just a great presentation, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to delegations. I'm not sure if anyone has signed up. Ms. Sheets? I'll read my thing. I'm sure. Probably know it right, Ms. Sheets. I will read it. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Culpeper County public schools. There will be no action taken by the board at this meeting, and such items will be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another speaker. No speaker may address the board more than once per meeting. Delegations wishing to address the board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic. A sheet for this purpose is provided at the entrance to the meeting room. That being said, Ms. Sheets?
Budget season is almost over, and it will soon be testing season. There will be pretests, study guides, practice tests, benchmark tests, unit tests, chapter tests, and finally, the most important test of all time, the SOL test. Testing season culminates with the almighty SOL test. The SOL tests indicate whether a student is a success or a failure. The SOL tests evaluate a teacher's ability to teach. It's strange, now that a lot of the young people are gone, I can look around this room and say that all of us are probably of an age where we're doing the SOL test, and all of you in here are very successful individuals. I can't recall a single job application that asked for your SOL test scores. I have two sons that went through Culpeper County Schools. For one son, school was very easy, and so were the SOL tests. For the other son, school was challenging for him on a daily basis. When the SOL tests came around each year, these tests told him he was a failure. No matter how much he studied and prepared, and he was supported by good teachers, he was supported by his family, he was not a successful test taker. That son is an adult in his 30s now. He has a good job, he's an honorable citizen, he has his own business, his own health insurance, and not once has anybody ever asked for his SOL test scores. I remember all the tears and frustration as a parent and an educator, not being able to help my son be successful on these so-called important tests. Every parent, every student, has their own story of how the SOL tests have impacted their lives and family. I recall the amount of time and expense to prepare for the SOL test. There is the rearranging of schedules, hall monitors, bathroom monitors, proctors in the classroom, quiet, silent buildings, all changes to a school day which increase stress and anxiety. Standardized testing is a charade that promotes wealth for the publishing companies and creates a false illusion of success and failure in people in our school system. I stand before you tonight with a suggestion that may shock you, and it will probably make you laugh. I recommend that Culpeper schools take a hiatus from standardized testing in all grades and classes where the test results do not affect a student's ability to earn credits for graduation. The increased instructional time in the classroom, actually teaching and learning, will benefit all students and staff. The freedom from test anxiety, stress, pretest preparation, memorization of facts, and the removal of the emotional stigma associated with pass fail will greatly improve the emotional state of every member of our school community. You may laugh at my suggestion tonight, and I'm sure that you'll chuckle over it, but I want to say that you realize everything that I'm saying is absolutely true. I would love to see the school board bring our schools back to a time where the welfare of our students was more important than the test scores of our school system.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address the board tonight? We will move on from delegations then. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda A and B? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. At this time for action items, I will just turn this to Dr. Bradz.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, this particular agenda item is the presentation and approval of the FY '24 operating budget. As staff and I work together to prepare for this evening and prepare information for the county in the upcoming meeting, this Thursday, we discovered a calculation error in terms of the revenue from the state. And it's not related to the Mills tax error that they made, but we do not want to exacerbate that error by creating another error until we resolve that. In preparing our documents for this setting, it was discovered, and we need some additional time. So at this time this evening, I will not be presenting the budget. I take responsibility for that delay, so I do apologize for that delay and inconvenience. I will communicate to the county that we do not have the prerequisite information for them for Thursday, but we will get that to them as quickly as possible, upon which time the board can act on that. So subsequent to this meeting, I will be seeking the chair to work with board members for a special meeting to hear the updated presentation to the FY '24 operating budget. Administration does not anticipate any draconian changes to what we have recommended, so please be aware of that. It's not something on the proposed expenditure side. We have to tidy up some things on the revenue side. And as you know, the revenues and expenditures have to match whatever the proposal is, even though we do not have a state budget. We can't be... Even with that estimate, it has to be something that we are very comfortable in defending, and we will resolve the error and get with the board as soon as possible, hopefully to be able to meet the timeline to present to the supervisors on Thursday. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have, or have staff address any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradz. There are no questions at this time? Moving on, for the superintendent and staff reports. Dr. Bradz, do you have any other...
Madam Chair, I have no further update. Thank you.
Thank you. Our finance report, Mr. Shomo.
Good evening. We're basically February right now, we're pushing hard to get the March, into March so we can actually get some firm numbers. That's what we get paid on in the past, and that's what we're shooting for. So right now, we're talking about February. February, we're down to about 75 students from the budget. Still very manageable compared to what we were anticipating from the state. Like I said, all these numbers are based on the calc tool that we all are anxiously waiting to get kind of finalized a little bit. Going to page two here, we're still operating within the same parameters here for the budget. Right now, we're at about 48% or 50% of the budget unencumbered. Go to the next page, and the next one after that. We've still got about 50% of our budget remaining, which is kind of right on target where we should be for right now. A little less. Tonight's expenditures total about 7% of that budget. You can see there, we spent about 7% of our budget a month. So it's tracking pretty much as it has in the past, so no thing there to highlight. Like I said, we're right now, we're trying to get to the end of March and try to do a projection on what we're looking at, but right now, everything seems to be going along as planned, unless something that would not come that we don't foresee. And that's about it. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shomo. Now have our operations report. Dr. Bradz will do this tonight.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'm presenting the operations report for Dr. O'Brien this evening. Dr. O'Brien and his wife also works with us, Heather. Heather's just recently lost her father, and just prior to that, lost her mother. Our thoughts and prayers are with the O'Briens at this time. This is a very difficult time for those very close-together passings of loved ones and dear family members, so we're thinking about them very much so. I'll go through this quickly. Happy to answer any questions, but may have to defer them to a later time if I do not know the exact answer. Ms. Jameson, I don't have the clicker. If you want to click through for me, please. Next slide. I don't think I do. Next slide, please. This is just some repairs at Eastern View High School to prevent slippage for students. Next slide. Pearl sample we're replacing. I didn't get a chance to look up whatever a Blodjet oven is. I think it's something related to a flux capacitor from Back to the Future. I see capacitor, I think flux capacitor. Just go with it, go with me on that. Next slide. Hot water valve actuator on a rooftop. Next slide. Hot water heater. I will pause and say this. It is amazing, our operation staff, both maintenance, our building custodians, the expertise that they have, and what we can get done without going out to a third party or private contractor. It's amazing what our crews can do, from HVAC to you name it, to flux capacitors. I mean, it's pretty amazing. Next slide. This is continued progress on the work at CCHS as we prepare for CCHS' baseball season this spring, but subsequent to that, these improvements, as we've informed the board and with the board's blessing, the inaugural season this summer of the Culpeper Cavaliers. I think I got that right, Dr. Sartorholm back there? Yes? Okay, so don't ask me about that one. I got that one right. What, am I seeing that correctly? Mr. Shomo, the generator at Emerald Hill is actually there. Talk about a supply chain delay, that's probably an 18-month item that took us to get that generator. It's in place. Good to see that. Next slide, please. Some other items, closing in some classrooms at Eastern View. You see some other works there. I'm not going to read each one of those, except for the last one. In January, 343 work orders and closed 312 of those work orders. As I said earlier, our staff's amazing in what they do and what they turn around. And also, we'll throw in there some emergency requests from time to time that come out of places like, I don't know, the central office, when, you know, I mess up something or break something, they're there to help, so it's greatly appreciated. Next slide. Yes, I'm guilty of that. Example of closing in the classrooms at Eastern View. Next slide. And that's totally in-house. Our staff, our carpenters can do that. It's amazing work they do, and plumbing and electrical that goes along with that. Food service update, you see the year-to-date, based upon this year so far and last year at this time, how we're tracking with respect to that, how we're tracking, I think I just stole that term from Mr. Shomo. Here we're tracking food service. Next slide, thank you. And food service, am I seeing that again? Next slide. I'm not sure why that was different. Okay, technology. We've updated you on camera, the replacement of cameras for digital cameras, we're about 87% complete. We've installed 280 of 316 that were out there that needed to be upgraded to digital cameras. Projectors in CCHS. Worked on maintenance of the E911 system, replaced and repaired Chromebooks. And technology resolved a lot of open tickets. Next slide, please. Transportation Department, working on a new fence around the bus garage area. The poles there will actually get fencing on it, so just so you know, that's not quite finished. Next slide. And new camera system underway. We've updated the school board with respect to the camera system that will have forward-facing cameras, high-definition cameras, web-based storage, not having to go bus-to-bus to pull a tape. Our drivers, our transportation staff, our building administrators are excited about this prospect of this update to our camera system internally. Next slide. Externally. Our entire fleet, and did have conversations prior to this with the sheriff's department and supporting and helping us enforce this, our entire fleet will be fitted with stop-arm cameras, and that's pretty amazing for our size school division. It's probably almost an every-other-day occurrence that we have a vehicle pass a bus with the stop sign out. And as you know, we have stop-arm cameras on several buses, not enough, but the company has changed their structure totally. We do not have to have funds up front where they have, the way they have diversified their company, very exciting. I've shared that with you, that's kind of old news, but this is underway, the company's here. They're doing about five buses per day. We'll do all the buses that we have, except for those that we anticipate that will be leaving the fleet due to the bus replacement that we've told you about in the upcoming budget, so we're excited about that. This will be phenomenal in terms of curbing this notion of passing our stop-school buses, which I implore everyone out there, please do not pass our stop-school buses with the stop-arm cameras out. It happens all the time, and our drivers without the camera then have to be witnesses, then have to go to court. It's complicated, it takes them away from their work. This system of automatically registering the driver and the IDing the plate and the system that they get a civil summons for that has been supported by the Commonwealth Attorney and the sheriff's office, and we very much appreciate that. So this is really exciting that this is moving forward for fleet installment, fleet-wide installment of stop-arm cameras. Next slide. This just shows them what's retrofitting, is that the right term? Placing the cables on the bus for the enhanced views that will capture both the internal cameras and the stop-arm camera on the driver's side of the bus, obviously where the stop-arm comes out. Next slide. Relitering because of the placement of the stop-arm cameras. You can see that's staff from the camera company here. Next slide. Next slide, questions? Okay, any questions you may have that possibly someone in this room can answer besides me?
Dr. Bradz, we have no questions tonight.
Excellent. Excellent.
Wait, I might have a question. Have we always had the audio, or is the audio enhancement new? Says additional cameras to enhance views and sound capture.
Yes, we've always had audio. This will enhance the audio greatly. It's between.
Surround sound now.
Yes. No, the enhanced audio is not a louder voice of the bus driver, no. Better recording of audio and video on the system, yes.
Thank you.
That will help with us deter, from time to time, minor misbehavior that occurs, sometimes on a school bus. Sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett. All right, on to board member reports, well, our comments, actually. Ms. Brown, you want to start? No? Okay, good. Ms. Hutchins?
I just want to echo what we've said before, the, how proud we are of our students and our staff that we recognize, not just the ones we recognize tonight, but especially those ones we recognize tonight, and the passion that these students and staff bring, whether it's on the field or on the stage, or on the band, in the band room, or on the art room, that providing these opportunities for our students are important to their success in the classroom and in life. Their positive ways of expressing themselves is a benefit to their mental health and their growth as an individual. And I am very, very proud of what we offer for these children and of our staff who do it every single day for us. I attended the Pyramid Concert at EV, and it was fantastic with Pearl Sample, Floyd DeBens, and Eastern View singing. It was wonderful to see the progression of abilities and, again, the passion that these students have. And the Rock of Ages performance at Culpeper High, which was an amazing event as well. And I just want to thank everybody for all they do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Ms. Lokenville? Ms. Tesley? Ms. Burnett? Go for it.
I'm going to go for it. I just wanted to thank Emerald Hill again for their recruitment video. I think it's a positive reflection of that community and our entire district. Wonderful example. And thank you to Ms. Wacharsky for her Fine Arts Why We Create video, and the staff who, and teachers who helped in that and participated in that, and who lead our children every day in those creative activities. Also, congratulations to all student recipients of the ZAP Awards, who represent our school district so well and are such positive role models. Thank you so much.
And I guess I'd just like to thank you again, Tiffany. And I understand what you mean when you watch that video, that when you see groups of children, little kids, singing why they sing, and they're just so happy, and then the children doing their artwork and the smiles on their faces, it just does give you that feeling that they're well-rounded kids that have a lot of passion. And I thank you so much, all of the Fine Arts Department. Thank you. Whoops, sorry. And our future information items. The summary of the Culpeper County School Board Committee reports are on board, doc, as well as our membership for February 2023. Future meeting dates, the administration committee will meet March 21st. The next business work session is March 27th. Finance will meet April 3rd, and the regular school board meeting will follow on April 3rd, and capital planning committee will be April 5th. We do need to go into closed session now, so is there a motion? Mrs. Smith, the time is 7:17.
A move that the school board convene a closed session at 7:17 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of substitute teachers for '22-'23, the approval of spring coaching supplements for '22-'23 for CCHS, the approval of spring coaching supplements for '22-'23 for EVHS, the approval of spring coaching supplements for '22-'23 for CMS and FDB, FTBMS, and the discussion of student matters related to name student A expulsion and name student B released from compulsory school attendance in accordance with regulations of the Board of Education, cannot benefit from education at school as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A2.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll now go into closed session as soon as.